Right after the Pledge of Allegiance. Why don't you have them come on in? For the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on in, fill in anywhere. Up and down the aisles, wherever you guys want. Front row, anyplace you want to be. You can use these chairs up here too, on the sides and the ones in the front. Parents feel free to go along the walls, anyplace you want. Okay, we all settled, I'm gonna start the town council meeting and we do that by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're gonna move to talk a little bit about the soccer team, okay? Alright, folks. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Lundary Town Council Meeting. Today is November 25th, 2019. Could you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. As is our tradition at the town council meeting, we take a moment of silence to honor all those men and women who service in the military here and abroad. We honor all of those who are first responders here in the town of Lundary since they are here to take care of all of us. And they did a pretty nice job, you know, in the last few days here keeping everybody nice and warm over the weekend going out to the seacoast. Moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. Usually we start with public comment, but we're gonna start tonight with Coach Tebbitz. Are you here?
Thank you for having me.
Come on up. Why don't you have a seat up here, right here in the middle for us? And why don't you tell us a little bit about your team?
So, my name is Ashley Tebbitz and I'm the proud soccer coach of our Unified Soccer Team. I am so proud of this team and all they've -- I'm gonna cry. I'm so proud of this team and all they've accomplished this year. They have been there for each other, they're supportive, they're hardworking, they're dedicated, they have amazing families who have been a family to me and supportive to all of the kids in our program. And this year it was so impressive and rewarding to watch them take a step, each step closer and closer to the championship and it was the first championship for Unified Soccer and I couldn't be more proud of them.
So, Coach, you're the first of what we believe is going to be a continuous tradition here at the town council meeting since we are the only group that can write proclamations. You know, we got this wild idea when the football team, you know, beat Pinkerton and figured, well, let's start talking about this, let's make sure the kids know we care. And so, as all of the children and all the sports achieve success, we're gonna continue this. So with that, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna have Counselor Combs read the proclamation.
Sure, that'd be great.
In honor of the Lundary United Soccer Team becoming the state champions, it is hereby proclaimed by the Council of Lundary as follows. Whereas the Lundary United Soccer Team played Dover Green Wave in the state championship game on Sunday, November 10th, 2019, and whereas Lundary's Aiden Cook scored the first and third goals, and whereas Alana Vargas, who was assisted by Chris Tutt, scored the second goal in the 3-1 win over Dover. And whereas goalie Cameron Thieran had incredible saves throughout the entire game. And whereas the game was truly a team effort, momentum was built during the regular season and the team was a united front throughout the playoffs. The energy, the positivity, and the dedication from this team contributed to the success of their season. Unified is a family which supports one another and this championship moment was a win for the athletes, the helpers, their parents, their coaches, their school, and for inclusion. Therefore, on the occasion of their well-earned state championship title, the Lundary Town Council recognizes the Lundary Unified Soccer Team for their 5-1 record and their championship win in this year 2019. Signed this 25th day of November, 2019.
Thank you, come on up. So Coach, if you come up here in the middle, can the team come up? Line up right here in front, come on through, we'll shake your hands too. Congratulations.
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 Well done.
Congratulations.
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 Stay up here, kids, we're gonna take a picture.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sextilia.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So kids, we're gonna put your coach right here in the middle. You guys, around your coach, please.
Thank you very much.
And if you guys wanna face out towards the crowd?
Face out towards the crowd, just pick a side, trying to even things off. Good? Everybody good, everybody can fit in the picture? Do we need anybody down in front? Can you get everybody? We'll get the next signature and we'll get it over to you. So folks, I'm gonna move through public comment and then I'll give the students an opportunity to leave. Is there anyone who wants to approach the council for public comment? Public comment of any kind. No public comment? Well, kids, you guys can go. So folks, the way the town council works is, is that we're going to be moving into another presentation as part of public comment, then we're gonna move into a public hearing with regards to a zoning ordinance. The other items we move through, we usually don't entertain public comment, although if you're here, we will listen. If there's any other subject that's not on the agenda tonight that you are here to speak about, now would be the time. Anybody? Is this the -- come on up. Just have a seat right over here in the middle, just give us your name and address.
My name is Mackenzie Precher and I live at 5 Shadow Ridge Road in Lundary.
Yes.
And I'm coming to the council because my neighborhood and neighbors were just made aware of the PFOA contamination that is now coming into Lundary and affecting our part of town. And we were just coming to see what the town is doing to help us. We've opted to test ourselves, a bunch of neighbors, and we're waiting on results, but just very concerned with the potential of our wells being contaminated. And if they're not contaminated now with St. Albayne continuing to pollute, how long will it be before they are?
Okay, so I live in the affected area as well and I received notification today from the state, St. Albayne, that they're coming to test my well. And I'm going through that process. DES, Department of Environmental Services, was here at a couple of town council meetings ago. And that is on the cable station, so you can see what they said in detail. We do have some follow-ups that we can share with you, you know, right now with regards to where we stand now and what steps we're trying to take. Why don't we do those first and see if you have any questions?
That sounds great.
Kevin?
Sure, so as it was mentioned, if you are within the groundwater management zone, have you contacted St. Albayne, has we put on that list yet?
I have already been in contact with DES and they won't touch us because we are within the consent decree area for St. Albayne. We are west of High Range and north of 102.
So, are -- but, okay, so you are within the groundwater management zone though?
Within St. Albayne's responsibility.
They are, okay. And so have you contacted St. Albayne to sign up to have your well tested through them?
Yes, we are not currently on the list, so we've opted to test on our own because they're only testing 580 wells right now. And then once they have those results, they told me it would be a few months out and then they would go from there where it would be tested next.
Okay, so what we can do is we can try to expedite to get, since you are within that consent decree area, we can try to expedite it to get the well tested quicker. Because from what I understand is, once your well is tested, if it is at the levels that are above 12 parts per trillion, then they will start providing bottled water to those affected wells.
Yeah, that's what I talked with Golden Associates last week, who's doing the testing for St. Albayne. And we're not on the current list right now, so we opted to test on our own, but they said if we come up above that 12 parts, to contact St. Albayne and they would provide us with water.
That's correct, yeah.
I can tell you, I signed up on the DES website three weeks ago and contacted St. Albayne's and it was about three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I contacted DES probably over a month ago and then I spoke with them last week and he kinda was like, "You're within that consent decree and we won't," it's St. Albayne's responsibility, not ours, at this point.
Okay. The other thing, as John had mentioned at the last meeting, we have engaged our attorney to make sure that we are legally protected. Obviously, if there's any contamination in the wells in Lundary, it should be the responsibility of the responsible party that created the contamination to mitigate that issue. So our attorney for the town is engaged in that and we're looking at testing other areas, including the aquifer along Litchfield Road as well.
So to give you an example, I had a long talk early this morning with the town attorney. So, the decree that's in place right now, what was explained to us here at the town council meeting is that High Range Road is the point that they picked that they felt was legally defensible. So, it's not a scientific line. So, it could be in other places in town. The town attorney's been going through, searching for what is it that we can, you know, bring forward in a suit. What we talked about this morning was, is that we have a couple of major aquifers in town. So, I asked the town attorney to work with the town manager, to work with DES, to test those aquifers as fast as absolutely possible. Because if we test those aquifers, which are connected to the underwater rivers in town, and if those aquifers are affected, then we feel that we can have, there's a point of law in which we can go after St. Albayne ourselves, outside of the decree. Now, I don't know if we can do that or if we can't do that, but that was the conversation we had this morning. So that we're looking at every avenue we can come up with, because if that is the case, then, you know, then the town will move swiftly, you know, towards whatever that resolution would be. I don't wanna say what we would do or wouldn't do, because I just don't know. But I do know that that's the conversation I had with legal counsel this morning.
The other interesting thing just to note too is that, and I don't know if it was mentioned at the last meeting or not, but DES is also being sued right now by companies who believe they set the limit too low. And if you read the union leader today on the front page, there's an article about how certain bottled water that's being sold in grocery stores right now is above the limits that they set. And the public water that's distributed by, I believe, the Merrimack Village District is also above the limits. And so you've got people who aren't even on wells that are getting public water that are testing above the limits. So, we're watching it all very carefully, very closely. Obviously, we're doing everything that we can do from our side to protect the residents in Lundary, you know, and really until DES set the new limits back on September 30, we weren't in the affected area, but now we are. And so, unlike Merrimack and Litchfield and parts of Bedford, we're almost playing catch-up now because we're now in with those communities with regard to St. Albayne.
My thing was, I just wanted to make you guys aware that our neighborhood is concerned and really looking for answers. Right now, we're just waiting on results. From our perspective, what would you like us to do once we get results? Do you want, does the town wanna know? I know we have to report them to DES and to St. Albayne.
Absolutely, absolutely, we wanna know.
But do you want them also?
Yep.
The best we can do at this point is, is we need data. And, you know, the posture that the council set at the meeting in which DES was here is that, you know, given whatever data we can have, we will take the absolute strongest possible legal actions we can take and we will do what we need to do. I mean, we're not gonna hold back. We just need to find a way to work inside the legal system. I've also had a conversation with the town attorney about trying to figure out how to put pressure on to expedite the testing of the wells. And that question is there. There's also a question out to DES to see if we can put a forum together here, public forum, sometime in early January, get a date from them in which the citizens can all come in and ask the questions they need to ask directly from DES.
That would be great.
So we're working on all that now, but as Kevin mentioned, we found, you know, September 30th, you were okay, October 1st, you're not. So, we found out and we're moving on it.
I mean, I literally, I just clicked on something about a week and a half ago and was like, "Wait a minute, that's my neighborhood." And then let our neighbors know, because most of them have no idea that it's going on, so I didn't know if there was any other way to let people know that they're in the affected area.
So, we have been publicizing it. We have put it out to the press, we have it on Instagram, Facebook, and our website. We're pushing the information out.
And if people go on the website, it's the first thing under Town News, they just click on Water Quality Study, which is, it has information on both the separate water quality study we did for the town, which was separate from this whole investigation, but it also lists all of the information for the PFOA and PFAS investigation, who to call, where to get information, and the maps and all that stuff.
Now, a number of people have asked us about air testing and everything, so we have an air testing station here in town by Moose Hill. We have pressed DES for a standard to test the air and they haven't given us one.
I mean, that's part of my concern, is that St. Albayne is continuing to operate and release these PFOAs every day. So, even if we aren't contaminated now, we could be down the road.
So DES claims that they've been monitoring it and did they, correct me if I'm wrong, they said it was near zero? That's what they claim. That's what DES told us. You know, we were involved, just --
Can you speak into the microphone?
So, what we were told was, is that three years ago, when we went to the meetings and asked about, you know, being involved, there just, there wasn't any data for us to get involved. You know, they were over there and they were dealing with it. It's really the change in the parts per trillion that changed, that now has us involved. And we were pressing everybody for answers, what exactly does that mean? I've gotten some answers from folks that it could be 25 different chemicals. It could be things that you wear today that have PFOAs in them. So, we're learning as fast as we can go. Are we answering your questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to come to the council and make you aware of the concerns and see, I mean, I've been reading in the paper and kinda piecemealing in the last week and a half myself, trying to figure out what's been said, what's been done, what meetings are going on, so this was definitely helpful.
I live near you, so I have a vested interest. Are we missing anything? Are there any other questions? Anyone else in the audience have any questions?
What are the chemical names, those acronyms?
We'll have to get them for you.
It's a long name.
One thing I'm not, is a scientist.
Awesome, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you for coming down. Yes ma'am? Can you please come up and sit at the microphone, ma'am? I'm sorry, it's just so that we can capture everything?
Yeah, well, I can't hear a word you're saying, but will the town help the people in Lundary? Will they push St. Albayne to get our water tested?
We are in that --
The test costs $300. And if you look at the map, I looked at the map on Facebook, it is so small, you cannot see the streets or the areas. I had a neighbor, who's the one that told me about it. There's a lot of people who don't know anything or anything that's going on.
So we'll put out another press release.
I can't hear you.
I said, "We'll put out another press release." And make another run, is it up on Twitter?
John, the easy --
Is it in the newspaper?
The easy way to interpret the data is, if you're west of High Range Road and north of 102, you're in the area.
Yeah, I'm on Elwood Road, maybe on the fringe, but I'm in the area.
Can you give your name and address to Kirby and we'll follow up and whether you're in or out, we will make sure that your name gets submitted to St. Albayne. You should do it yourself anyway, but we'll make sure, we'll keep a running list of residents who are asking for their wells to be tested so that we, when we're additionally pushing St. Albayne for this, we'll make sure yours is included.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, your name and address? Your name and address, please?
Nancy Cooper.
Okay.
29 Elwood Road.
Okay, thank you Nancy.
And I've been there 42 years.
That's terrific. Thank you. Anyone else on water or anything else before I move on to the public hearing? Okay, folks, seeing nothing else, I'm closing public comment. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2019-06.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to rezoning map 14, lot 45A.
John, we skipped an item.
Oh, sorry about that.
I will retract, so moving, closing our public comment.
Why don't you, well, let's just table the public comment and we'll move to Freedom Energy Logistics presentation on community choice aggregation. So -- Who's doing that?
This is Bart Frommuth and Thomas Carter from Freedom Energy Logistics. Just by way of background, I formally met the two of them at the NHMA conference last, was it last week or two weeks ago? I guess it was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago now.
Saw their presentation on community choice aggregation, was unaware of what it was and how it worked prior to the presentation and after seeing it, I said, "You gotta come to Lundary and make this presentation, because I think it might be something that we as a community will be interested in." And I do apologize to anyone watching tonight, our PowerPoint machine is, the projector is not working, so we're all working off of handouts this evening.
Gentlemen, so who's Thomas and who's Bart?
I'm Bart Thomas.
Thomas Carter.
And Bart Frommuth.
So I believe you all have one of these?
Please proceed, yes.
And no, the problem is not that it's not plugged in, it's, the problem's greater than that. Thanks Tony.
It was just hanging right there.
Yeah, 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 always a wise guy.
Too simple. So yes, we wanted to just show you folks what is available to you now with the passing of House Bill 286 as of October. I'll briefly just go over the first slide here, just about who we are, Freedom Energy Logistics. So we're about a 30-man company based right here in Auburn, New Hampshire, and we serve a lot of the large municipalities, large manufacturers, industrial with their energy procurement. We've been in business for about 15 years and very, very proud of, you can see the awards and recognitions here. One of our first products was actually a product whereby we brought direct end-users to the ISO New England Power Pool to procure their energy. And the Bath Iron Works here of General Dynamics has actually named us one of their small business vendors of the year and we're very proud for, you know, most of these awards and recognitions here. So, wanted to just let you know about why House Bill 286 was important. Many of you know that we've had third-party supply optionality for many years here in the state and that's been wonderful for the large energy users, again, these commercial industrial users, but for the residential user, that's not been the case. We've largely been left behind and there have been, as you can see here, many predatory business practices. We've had third-party suppliers, I'm sure you've all received postcards, you know, telemarketers, things like that, trying to reach out, trying to get folks to try third-party supply. And the challenge with that is that you've had, you know, less-than-valuable suppliers out there. All the blue-chip suppliers, the good suppliers are going after the large commercial and most of the folks on the supplier side coming to the residential market have been less-than and financial stability, as well as the contracts that they're providing have a lot of pass-through charges and are more, you know, they favor themselves, not the consumer. Obviously, limited purchase power, so, you know, the size of a small residence is not very appealing to most of these suppliers, whereas I think we all understand the metrics of buying in bulk and the rates that that would enable you to attain. And then up to this point, we've also, the last bullet point here, have had limited aggregation groups. So typically, up to this point, they've all been opt-in programs. We actually ran the largest of these opt-in programs many years ago in the state. And the challenge with those is that you only have the folks coming on board who actually understand what they're doing and who, you know, know what's available to them and so there's, you know, you don't see nearly the amount of buying power as the community as a whole is able to attain. So Bart was gonna talk more towards the specifics of 286.
So, 286 is really a game changer in the state of New Hampshire in that it enables you, as the town council, to essentially group all of your residents together that are currently on standard offer service with Eversource and put them into a one-point-of-contract energy contract with a third-party supplier. So there's a lot of interesting possibilities that can take place as a result of that and then solve for some of the issues that Thomas was talking about, i.e. some of the predatory business practices, preying on folks with the three-month contracts, with a teaser rate, maybe 30% off. You stop paying attention to your energy bill and a month before, you've given back all the savings you had, plus some. As well as the fact that the, again, the point of contract comes down to you at the town council, so you're able to go ahead and negotiate directly on behalf of 5, 10, 15,000 residents in their accounts. That gives you the ability to make sure that rather than have a more supplier-friendly contract, you have the customer-friendly contracts that the General Electrics and the BAE Systems get to enjoy. So, your purchasing scope, your purchasing level becomes much more attractive for these blue-chip suppliers to go ahead and bid on your opportunities. So as Thomas mentioned, you know, if we take a look back, we've almost got 90% adoption in the electricity space in terms of large users, municipalities that take advantage of that. When you get down to the residential level, only 20% of residential households in New Hampshire take advantage of the competitive marketplace and I think it's because of a lot of the things that Thomas had highlighted. So, you know, number one, because of the fact that you have a one-point-of-contract, you can work with a aggregation consultant such as Freedom Logistics to make sure that you weed out all the nefarious terms within the contract, gone for customer protections. You're providing a new and exciting mechanism to reach community sustainability and renewable initiatives. My favorite example in this space is the city of Nashua. They own a hydro dam that produces about 4.5 megawatts of -- They own a hydro dam that produces about 4.5 megawatts of, of power. We've been in many discussions with Nashua about putting forth a CCA program for their residents, in which they, in which case they can use their native hydro load and roll that into the overall fixed-price contract that they would offer to all of the residents. As Thomas mentioned, it's a fully opt-out type of a program, so the way that it operates is you send notices to anybody on standard offer, once you've selected your vendor, and they have 30 days to get back to you and, and take action as to opt-out. If they don't opt-out, they automatically get folded into the contract, but they can leave at any time with, with no penalty. So, really, the goal here is to create an alternative utility, or alternative default service, if you will. Lebanon is a customer of ours, and they're using this program to initiate smart meters in everybody's home, because they want to get into dynamic and time-of-use pricing, as well as demand-side management for their residents. So, some attractive options there, but things that they've asked Liberty to do for many, many years, and Liberty has just dragged, dragged, dragged their feet on this. And so, again, it's allowing you, as a community, to kind of take this into your own hands, and maybe move the ball a little bit further forward than it would go otherwise, relying on the same purchasing platform that everybody has for the last 40 or 50 years.
I will mention that it's not in replacement of the utility, so your utility will still be, you know, keeping the meters, keeping the lines, you know, they are the service contractor. It's really just the utility standard offer that, that, that this can provide an alternative to.
Correct. It's the other half of the bill.
Yes.
Correct, that's correct.
So, quick question, I mean, so if, if we were, for example, if we were to put solar panels on all of our buildings here in town, would we, could we recoup that power directly?
It depends on how you structure it, but yes, that would be an option for you. There's, like I said, there's all sorts of possibilities. I know a lot of folks had their hopes up with House Bill 365, which was gonna raise the net metering cap to 5 megawatts. I'm not sure if you guys had a project in town that you were looking to do that with, but there's communities like Derry, who had a couple of projects scheduled, and they're looking at CCA as a mechanism to move forward with some of their solar projects, but then roll that into the community purchase price for, you know, and again, Eversource, if you take a look at how they procure energy for all of our homes and businesses on the standard offer, they basically just go out two times a year, one time in the late fall, and then again, in the, in the late spring, and whatever the market's providing at that point in time is the rate that they're gonna offer the, the homes and the businesses. So, this is a, a liquid commodity, it's always moving, and so there's, they're really always gonna be a price-taker. So it's actually very, very easy for third-party suppliers, once they have the, the, the load size, to go out and best the Eversource rate. It becomes incumbent upon you, as the town leaders, as to, do we wanna go ahead and maybe purchase 30 or 40% renewable energy credits, or 100% renewable energy credits on top of that, and go 100% green for our community, or do we wanna maximize the savings for our residents, and maybe help them save almost a penny per kilowatt-hour versus what the Eversource rates are? So it all comes down to what you decide to do, and you have control of that through what would be your municipal aggregation plan. And if you flip to the next slide, it kind of gives you a quick, it's really five steps, we tried to reduce it to three for purposes of time tonight. One is, as I mentioned, forming your municipal aggregation committee, which would be town leaders, members of your energy committee, if you have one here in town, local activists that would like to get involved in these types of issues, and then your, again, your aggregation consultant. And, I don't believe we brought, did we bring the plan tonight?
No, we, we're just gonna do a 10-minute, 10-minute presentation, so, yeah.
But, well, we usually have a plan we pass around, it's about 40 pages long, but it's all-encompassing in terms of what you'd like to see in the contract, what you'd like to see in your purchase price, what types of products you'd like to, to offer. So, your aggregation consultant, hopefully Freedom would, would help you devise and, and put that together. Would also help you with your, your communications with, with the residents, your public education hearings that would be held, kind of open forums like this, especially once the notices go out for people to come in, ask questions about the program during the 30-day period, and then help you interface and negotiate with, with the supplier. So, like I said, it's, it's brand-new, but there's a lot of opportunity. Massachusetts has 140 communities that have now enacted community choice aggregation, of I believe, a possible 192. So, it's really caught on, and given the size of Londonderry, you'd be a very, very attractive option for a lot of suppliers to come and bid on, on this opportunity here, whereas some of the smaller communities would probably have to band together to get to that type of a critical mass that you possess here.
Gentlemen, questions?
And Bart, correct me if I understand, but it's, you're aggregating not just the residential, but the commercial and industrial potentially as well?
Correct. Anybody that's on standard offer would, if that's just buying their commodity from Eversource, not going to Constellations or Trans-Canadas, the town of Londonderry buys competitively, so you guys would not be opted in, you, you would wait until your contract expired, then you could make that determination to join if you wanted to. But yes, anybody that was currently buying directly from Eversource would be part of that opt-out pool, if you will.
Okay, questions?
The communities that you've been currently working with, how much of a potential decrease had they seen before and after?
So, I mean, before, again, almost 80% of all residential users are on standard offer service with their local utility here, so they're just, you know, taking whatever the utility offers. In this case, it really depends upon the utility. I would say that there's the most opportunity behind Eversource, because they tend to be the highest-priced utility, as well as there's a lot of kind of non-energy costs that get built into their commodity rate. Again, so while the businesses have been able to kind of get around that, it's been hard for the residential ratepayers to do so, but this would definitely be a mechanism. So, we're probably talking, again, conservatively, somewhere in the neighborhood about a penny per kilowatt-hour is what we'd be able to demonstrate. Again, but depending upon how much additive you wanted to put into that overall rate. So if you wanted to go and buy 20% solar, maybe it's half a penny, or if you wanted to go 100% green through renewable energy credits, that might be, you know, a quarter of a penny per kilowatt-hour. It really depends on, on what's in your municipal aggregation plan, but if you wanted to maximize savings, a penny per kilowatt-hour would definitely be in, in the very realm, realistic realm of possibility, so.
Now, so for everyone at home, a penny may not sound like a lot, but certainly-
It could be between, you know, $8 and $15 per, per invoice, so it's, it's significant over the course of the year.
Thank you.
When the gas-fired power plant went into Londonderry almost nearly 20 years ago, we, we did have some conversation about some aggregation with, with the local community here, with that power plant. The fact that that's there and running, is there, does that play into, would that play into this at all? I know all that electricity now goes up to the grid, but the fact that they are local and they're in our, in our town area, would, would that be helpful, or is that would be part of the negotiation?
Yeah, so if, if that was a priority of, of the town, in order to try to engage with, with the local power plant, you know, you could certainly reach out to them, and you'd use your CCA aggregation plan as the mechanism with which to tell third-party suppliers that if they hope to qualify, to, to win the bid for your business, that they'd have to be inclusive of that local, local power plant. So, it's an option, and there are a lot of communities that are doing that with local hydro, local solar, so that would be, you know, different from that standpoint, but that's definitely a key component of this, that's attractive to those communities that, that do want to, to include those generation facilities that are local to their towns in these plans.
Thank you.
So, what, essentially what we've done is we've, we've created templates, boilerplates, trying to make this as simple as possible to begin, and, and then we would be actually sitting with you folks to customize those, to bring, you know, whatever is, is locally here, and whatever your goals are. So whether that's savings, or whether that's renewables, or blend thereof, you know, we'll move that forward.
And there's, there's a couple different levels of complexity, kind of what we focused on tonight is what I like to call like the Fisher Price model, it's like your basic entry-level type of a program. That's entirely self-funded, so there'd be no expense to the town to initiate and, and implement that. Like, for instance, our, our fees and the supplier fees are all built into the per KWH rate, as it appears on the ratepayers' invoices, so there'd be no outlay from that standpoint. If you take a look at, again, communities like Lebanon, they're looking at a program in which they would actually become the third-party supplier themselves, they're looking to become a load-serving entity, which has some greater optionality to it, but not self-funded and, and something that'd have to raise those funds through bonding or some other mechanism enabled by the bill.
Anyone else? So I, I lived in a community power authority, which we got kilowatts down to like about two or three cents, and they were buying them from Niagara Mohawks, so another, whole another story. Unless the council objects, I mean, I'd like to see them bring, we have a little funny saying here in town, "Londonderry leads the way." Bring us the most aggressive plan we can go with, and we'll go as, you know, to the community with the most aggressive plan to get them to engage.
Okay.
That's generally the way we like to do it, one of, you know, we just had a revaluation and taxes went up, and this would be a great way of giving money back. We're doing something else tonight to give money back too, but we would probably like to see, you know, what's your most aggressive plan? Show us, challenge us to like, you know, take it on and, and save the people in their money. We've got, Colleen, 9,000 households?
9,300.
9,300 households. All right, plus all the commercial that we have here in town. So, and, you know, we'd be happy to engage, you know, the school government and, and whatever. Go out and look at our community, look at what you think we can do. If you think we can put solar panels on, on all the buildings, tell us that. If you, you, whatever it is, we're willing to listen.
Okay.
And the funny part about it is, we're willing to do it.
Excellent. Yeah, no, I think you guys will be pleasantly surprised with the opportunity, and leading the way is gonna be fantastic, because I, I do think that over the next two to three years, you're gonna see a, a number of communities, if not the majority of communities, start to move in this direction, so.
Yeah, are they aware of the solar farm we already signed up, over on, on Alderman Road?
I don't think we did talk about that, I can fill you in on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we're one of the first ones to sign a contract with somebody, a community that put a solar farm on our former landfill.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Yeah, and again, that's something that, you know, depending upon who's getting the offtake for that, you could, you could work that into your CCA eventually, so.
Yeah, I don't know how Granite Ridge goes about distributing their power now, I believe it goes into the national grid network, and I'm not sure whether they can break it out or not, or where it goes, but that's a whole nother question.
Yeah, definitely something to explore, so.
Anything else? Technically, we're in public comment, does anybody have any comments? We're good.
All right, well, thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I think a motion, well, the, the public hearing is tabled, so we'll bring the public hearing back without motions, since it was tabled, and we'll move to ordinance 2019-06, an amendment to zoning ordinance relative to rezoning map 14 lot 45A. Who is presenting?
I believe Colleen will be presenting it, and also the... The applicants are here as well.
Hi folks, sir, just your name for the record, please.
Dan Gore, Eight Lane Way as a resident, and also co-owner of Ovation Theater Company.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Chair, members of the council, you have before you a request for a rezoning. This is for a parcel located at 61 Harvey Road, map 14 lot 45A. The current zoning classification is industrial 2, and the request is to rezone this to Gateway Business District. Unfortunately for the viewing audience, we don't have the benefit of the projector to show you on map geo, but the parcel is located toward the northerly end of Harvey Road. It is the last parcel on the left-hand side of the road as you're driving north, before you get to the airport on land. So, it is surrounded on two sides by the Gateway Business District. So the planning board did review the zoning request, and a, and has made, did make a unanimous recommendation to re-approve the rezoning from the current classification of industrial 2 to Gateway Business. So, Dan's here, if you have any questions about their particular use. I would say that the zoning, though it's being requested by this applicant, would apply no matter what to, to any project that came forward, but we do feel that the parcel is appropriate for the Gateway Business District, and would recommend the council approve this change.
Is this the piece of property that's right next to the parking lots?
Yes.
Or set of parking lots comes?
Yes, correct. And you have in your packet, there were some existing site plans, and then some, some conceptual plans for their particular project, if you have questions.
And did it pass the planning board unanimously?
Yes, it did.
Are there any questions from the council with regards to this property?
I don't have any questions, I was at the planning board meeting.
Okay.
It was smoothly. Everyone's excited for them to talk.
Sir, before I go to the public, is there any statement you would like to make?
Well, first, did want to just clarify, we are the applicant, not the current owners of the property. We do have the permission, you have the-
Understood.
-note in here of the current owners. We're in the process of, of hopefully purchasing the property for use for Ovation Theater Company, so I wanted to clarify that. And then, I am happy to tell you as much or as little as you want to know about Ovation Theater Company, which just formed at the beginning of this year. So, again-
Give us the Cliff Notes version.
Yeah, so it is a, a community theater program that has been a longtime vision of my wife Meg, who is here tonight. And with the idea of providing in this area, and as Londonderry residents, our hope was to have it here in Londonderry, a community theater program for youth, ultimately for adults as well, that would include performances, productions, but also workshops, classes, camps and such. And so that has happened throughout this year, but in found spaces, because we don't have a piece of property or a, a building or anything, so we've had to just sort of beg, borrow, and steal spaces for rehearsals and camps and such. And the idea here is to have a facility, a property on which we could do immediately with a, with a change-of-view-site plan approval, much of that already, rehearsals, workshops, classes, camps, storage of sets and props and costumes and such, and then hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, actually build a performance venue, a small, what's called a black box theater of 120 to 150 seats or so, where performances could actually be held as well. That's the future potential use, but it's something that the town of Londonderry does not currently have. We have gymnastics schools, we have dance schools and such, but we don't have anything dedicated purely to theater. And really, this entire area doesn't really have anything like that. Manchester Nash would do, but that would include everything that we're hoping to do. With, with that said, I'll say ovationtc.com would get you as much, more information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tom?
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight. So you're saying a, a capacity audience of like 100, 150, is that what I hear you say?
You know, ideally, 140 to 150, the, the space will be limited by the size of the property, and the building that we could fit on it, and also parking, which we're working with the, the planning staff and the planning board on, on what we can do there, but-
You may not be aware of, of this, but the, the other government in town, the school department, is looking to put in a, an auditorium.
I am well-aware and extremely supportive, as a longtime theater person, and, of that effort, and I hope that that effort would continue. That is for a much larger-
My suggestion would be to brief them, like you're briefing us, as to what your thoughts are, your plans are, and perhaps explore the opportunity of a, a joint public-private partnership, where you might be able to partner with the school board to get both these projects done at the same time, with maybe some, some combined funding thoughts.
Particularly from a funding standpoint, we would be very open to that, as a community theater program, it is not-
I believe, I think Tony might be able to tell me, but I think around 800 is the, the thought around the capacity of the auditorium they're looking at, so-
Yeah.
Just give you the food for thought. It may not fit your, your, your marketing plan, but it's, but it's, it's an, might be an opportunity for you to, to, to solve two community issues with one, one plan.
Yeah, and, and just, and thank you, Councilor Dolan, and again, we were very supportive of that project as residents. We would certainly be as Ovation Theater. What the town and the school department have been looking at is what this town needs, which is a, an auditorium, a theater space that would be 800 or so seats, with a traditional theater style. What we're proposing, and, and what would only fit on the property that we're looking to, to purchase and rezone, would be a much smaller space. Both are great for different types of theater productions, so we're supportive of any and all efforts to advance the arts in the area.
I really like the idea of public-private partnerships to, to solve problem, you know, multiple problems with, with one solution, but-
We're very open to that.
Yeah, I would just, I would suggest you might wanna make this presentation to them, to see if, if there's a way to do some combination thought there. If, if not, you know, then, then move forward the way you're, you're currently moving forward, but just, you know, just give it a, give it a, you know, a wider thought, and maybe give the school board a thought on it as well.
Thank you, will do.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience who has a question with regards to this particular subject? Seeing none. Are there any further questions? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Congratulations, sir, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close that public hearing.
Second. All those in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is closed. Okay, where's my agenda here? Okay, so I've had a request to, um, um, jump forward the, uh, number eight, the Water Resource Management Plan presented by, um, our GIS manager, Amy, and, uh, Comprehensive Environmental. Fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. In January of this year, the Conservation Commission took on the task of updating the original Water Resource Management and Protection Plan that was completed in 1991. With the help of town staff and members from the planning board and a representative from the town council, uh, they, we worked with, um, CEI to create the updated plan that you can find on the Conservation Commission's page on our website. And I'd like to introduce Emily DeFranco from CEI who will, um, present the plan, a brief overview of the plan.
Thanks, Amy. Hi, I'm Emily DeFranco and I'm a senior scientist with Comprehensive Environmental, and I've been working with Amy and the town since January to get this plan to where it is now. Um, and like Amy said, this was sort of an, it was an update of a plan that was written in 1991, which was a very solid plan, but just outdated. Now we have the ability to make very, uh, much better maps, for one, uh, and we have access to bigger databases and things like that, so we're able to bring that sort of into today. Um, so the plan today, uh, the 2019 plan was really a recommendation of your 2013 master plan was to complete this update, your Water Resources Management Plan. Uh, and the, the goal of that plan is to provide you with updated water resources data, both surfacing at your drinking water usage, both current and in the future as well. So, I basically, the next slide is a one-page summary of something that is like 180 pages. So, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I wanted to just give you sort of like the, the bird's eye view of what this is. Uh, so, the, one of the major things we did was inventory all your surface water bodies. We did that through a series of maps and tables to classify each stream reach, each pond, uh, talk about what classification New Hampshire DES gives that, that water body, and look at any impairments you may have. Every two years, New Hampshire DES come, and every state agency comes out with a list of impaired waters, and those are based on sometimes outdated water quality sampling data, but still, they come out with a, a list of waters they consider impaired that aren't meeting your water quality sta, their water quality standards. And you have five impairments in this town, or five streams that are impaired for something. Uh, those, those impairments range from chloride to pH to dissolved oxygen, and those impairments are something that, once a town's water body gets on that list, you are responsible for addressing those impairments with the ultimate goal of removing the impairment. And those, I'll talk about that more in the recommendations, but out of, you know, you have 183 stream reaches and there are five impairments overall. So, it's not a large part of the town, but it is something that becomes the town's responsibility. We also inventoried the, the locations of all your groundwater aquifers. This type of study doesn't look at the quantity of water that you have in your groundwater or how, you know, or basically, we don't look at that, I guess, to summarize it, but we do look at what types of aquifers you have. So, where do you have your stratified drift aquifers? Those are your higher yield aquifers versus just your bedrock aquifers. Um, and those maps and the locations of those are in the report. We also inventoried what we would consider threats to surface and groundwater, and we did that a few different ways. We looked at things like land use, where do you have agricultural operations, where are your, uh, streets and other impervious surfaces located in town, and would those cause a, pose a threat to certain surface and groundwater resources. We also looked at what areas of town are on sewer versus septic system. Um, and also where other things, New Hampshire DES has, um, databases of where landfills are, superfund sites, things like that. So, all of those have been inventoried and mapped as well, so we know sort of where in town we'd be looking at, um, potential, um, pollutants. We also inventoried your current drinking water usage and your supply. Uh, there's, we talked with Manchester Water Works, Penachuk Water Works, the Dairy Water Department, uh, to see how much water the town of London Derry has been using, how many residents are receiving water from those different public water suppliers, as well as who's receiving water from community wells, kind of like a, a well that's being, that services like a condo complex, that type of thing. And then we were able to estimate how many residents were on private wells and where those were located as well. Um, through those discussions with, uh, the public water suppliers, we were able to look at your current usage for water and what, then adding population growth into that, we can look at what your future demand based on that is going to be. And by 2040, it's estimated that you have about a 21% increase in drinking water demand. And so how you deal with that really becomes, it's one of the, 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 one of the things that is dealt with in this plan. So, that's the major findings, I guess, which, you know, it's just, there's more detail on all of this, but the main thing to talk about today are our recommendations for what to do moving forward, based on all of those, those things I just talked about. Um, so the fir, the next slide there is, what do you do to address your future water demand? Uh, the first thing I would do is, that we recommend, is to work with your existing water suppliers. So, work with Penachuk Water Works, Manchester Water Works, the Dairy Water Department, to see what other water they would have the ability to supply to the town, um, in the future, if necessary. You can also conduct a study to assess your actual groundwater supply in town. This study didn't look at the quantity of groundwater, like I was saying, or even the quality of groundwater. We were just looking at the location of the different types of aquifers throughout the town. And so, and that, the type of aquifers will tell you if it's a higher yield, lower yield, that kind of thing. And you do have one large surface water body. Um, Scobie Pond is your largest surface water body in town, so there, in the plan, there's sort of a review of a way you can assess, uh, surface water body for its potential to be a drinking water supply in the future. But in these types of situations, working with your existing water suppliers is probably the easiest way to go. Um, the next slide, moving on, is to address your surface water quality impairments, and like I said, the town will have a responsibility to address those impairments. That doesn't necessarily mean that you have to, you just have to be addressing it. So, you have to recognize that it's impaired and, you know, conduct water quality sampling, develop watershed-based plans, which is basically a first step to receiving fund, that, for then, um, the town can then apply for, um, implementation funding from the state to help address some of these impairments, but the first step would be to essentially take this type of plan, but make it smaller for, um, just the impaired water body. And once you do something like that, the town then is eligible to apply for implementation funding from the state. Um, and that process is outlined in the plan as well. And then the, the next slide here is just to continue to protect water quality. The, you have a lot of land in conservation right now, and the Conservation Commission does a great job with that, and that's, that map on that page is outlining all of your conservation lands. So, that's always the best way to go when you're trying to look forward to protecting water quality. Looking at, we looked at some of your, your town regulations, and there's a few recommendations in there for things you could do to tighten those up in regards to water quality. Another recommendation is to conduct a septic system assessment. Some towns have done, um, have done things like create a septic system database in the town, um, implement a pump-out ordinance, that type of thing. So, those recommendations are in there. And also assess some of your areas of impervious surfaces and where you can address stormwater runoff as well. So, that is my 10,000-foot view of this project, I guess. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. My contact information is on there as well. I'm happy to answer questions after this as well.
So, um, I, I guess you're not gonna get away without this question based on earlier conversations tonight. Do you have a, what is your point of view on what you heard here tonight with regards to PFOAs and DES and what's happening in our community?
Well, it's not uncommon. I live on the seacoast and we deal with that a lot with Peas Air Force Base, and the, what's had, what's had to happen out there is, you know, a lot of people are relying on bottled water, or they're putting in large-scale treatment systems, you know, at sort of like a community well level, like on Peas Air Force Base. Um, the, the best thing, I think, is to, to sample, to make sure you know what you're dealing with, but it sounds like what, everything you're doing is the right steps. You know, the, the potential lawsuit, obviously, that's probably the right step, but also looking at your alternatives for providing other, other forms of drinking water to the, to your homeowners that are in the affected areas. Expanding water, drinking water infrastructure, that type of thing to go, because you may not be able to always rely on the groundwater. You may have to rely more on your public water suppliers like Penachuk, who those larger companies are to, they can, they test for PFAS, PFOAs, all of that, and they have the ability, and they're dealing with putting in treatment if they need it on a large scale. So, those are, they, they have water to supply and they, they know how, they will deal with the treatment. And so that'd be, working with somebody like that also, just to see what their ability would be to expand into, more into London Derry would be something else I would recommend doing.
And it's on our list as well, so, very interesting. Gentlemen, any other questions for Emily?
Yes.
What are the five impairments?
Um, I don't have them all listed. Um, it's, and it's not all, it's parts of Beaver Brook, but not all of Beaver Brook. Um, it's part of, um, the South Perimeter Brook, but not all. That's, that's how these impairments work. You might have a very, very long stream, um, but it's just small sections of the stream. There are stream reaches that are considered impaired. Uh, it's, it's near the beginning, I think. Yeah. Sorry, I had them in my head and...
If anyone, uh, from the public, by the way, wants to review the entire report, it is on the, uh, website. Just go into Boards and Commissions, uh, under the Conservation Commission, uh, and the Water Resource Management, uh, Plan is on there.
Promise it's in here. Oh, here it is. Okay. Yeah, Beaver Brook, Brookhead Waters near Kendall Pond, um, Little Coase Brook, South Perimeter Brook, the Zankiegg Brook, and that's it. And then at like different reaches of those, so some of them might, you know, might be the two different reaches of the same Brook.
Yes.
The planning board being that you presented at, I believe one of your recommendations was potentially looking at expanding, uh, townwide water? Was that one of your recommendations, I believe, from what you had commented on?
No, I think it's, um, just assessing what, what other water Penachuk or Manchester could provide to the town. I wouldn't say you need to do that now. You have enough water now, for sure.
Okay.
But when you're looking at ahead and you're saying, okay, our population's going to increase, we're gonna have a, a increased demand of 21%, that's an option, just to see what's available. And I know Penachuk has, when we talked with them, they do have more water to provide to the town, I think, and, because they do these sort of, you know, 20-year, 30-year plans ahead of where they're gonna need to provide water, you know, how much more they're going to need, and that's in their, their plan to, you know, not just you, but other areas around you, they assume will, will, will need more water as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question more for you, Kevin. Uh, I, I wonder if, if you spoke with the town attorney, he could help us understand, uh, the various maintenance, maintenance funds that we have, our trust funds, our capital reserve funds, we have a number of ones, and I'm thinking that perhaps this whole issue of water, um, solution, mitigation of the PFOAs or other arsenic, or whatever, uh, that I'm thinking that there may be some expensive solutions that might, the town might eventually have to entertain, like even laying some, some public water lines. Uh, I wonder if any of the existing trust funds or maintenance funds that we have can accommodate that additional mission of, of the water, uh, uh, issues that we have, or, or do we need to create a new, a new fund? If we wanted to put some money away, Mr. Chairman, for, you know, potentially in the, uh, in the area west of, of High Range, for example, if we wanted to throw a water line in there from Penachuk or from Manchester Water Works, that it's gonna cost a lot of money. If we wanted to start putting some money away for our future, uh, implementation of something like that, would we need a separate maintenance fund for that, uh, or would a, an existing one be something we would deposit that money into? I just, uh, it's just something I, I, I just think we need to start thinking about. And if we don't need the money, we don't spend it, but, uh, I'm just thinking that some of these solutions that we've talked about are gonna be expensive, and, uh, I, I like the idea of planning ahead so that we don't take a real, a big hit all at once, that, that if we, if we start putting some money aside, then we'll have maybe some more financial options available to us when we eventually need it down the road.
So, one last question for you. Um, so I'm not a scientist, you know, but as an observer, it, it appears that the, um, the science is like a lot of other, a lot of other things we were starting to talk about, uh, it's evolving around what's happening with our water systems, and that we're now learning what we did to them over the last 30 to 40 years. Is that an accurate statement?
I think so. I think mostly, uh, in regards to some of these chemicals that we've never really considered before, like the PFOAs and, and other things like that. Um, a lot of the science is pretty, you know, especially when it comes to general surface water impairments, you know, chloride, dissolved oxygen, the, the things you might be dealing with in this town. The solutions for those are pretty standard now, you know, and, and the ways to manage some of those impairments are pretty standard. Um, it's more of the, you know, emerging contaminants is what they call things like PFOAs, where if we hadn't considered them before, we'd have to figure out first how to stop them and then where they came from and, you know, how to make, and how to clean it up. But a lot of the other ones, I feel like the science is not necessarily emerging anymore. It's, we have these things that we have to make sure that we don't get too much chloride in our streams, which is in our freshwater.
So, the newer ones we're hearing about is still evolving, we're still understanding and figuring out.
Yes, and as is the state...
The older ones, we've got a plan.
I'd say yes.
Okay.
Or at least a decent...
A path.
Path, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yes.
Quick question. One of the older ones that is a little frustrating is arsenic, where we're not seeing any new contaminants being introduced from farming or whatever that, that, for the existing arsenic or the natural occurring arsenic.
Yeah.
But we're seeing the standards change so that what was considered a safe level of arsenic is no longer considered safe.
Yeah.
So, so we're not do, we're not doing anything. We don't have any polluters and we don't have any, anyone to go after. It's just the standard has changed.
Yeah, and that's more from a, where they're realizing the human health effects, that I think they didn't have that science before. And arsenic is a tricky one in New Hampshire because we have natur, most of it is naturally occurring in the, in our bedrock. So, there's not much to be done with that in terms of treatment, other than moving the well, or, you know, there's not a lot to do.
Or filters or whatever.
Yeah, and it's, and it can be expensive, depending on, depending on how bad it is. But there is some of that, you know, this, but that again becomes an emerging contaminant because they're learning more about it. And, you know, it's, it's not that, the sources are different or we didn't know about it, it's just now we're beginning to understand the human health effects. And that's why they're having so many debates about the PFOA standard, because New Hampshire took this, you know, took one path to determine that standard, and other states have taken a different path, maybe a more conservative approach, and it's, you know, the, being, trying to be the most protective based on, on the science. That's what New Hampshire, I think, that's, that was their, that was their, uh, reasoning behind it being so strict.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, jumping back to our agenda, if the Budget Committee wants to join us up front?
Mr. Chairman, while we're, while we're just on the issue of, uh, water, uh, we did post a notice today on the website and all the social media that Penachuk will be doing fire flow tests tomorrow. Um, they're gonna be conducted between 10:00 PM on Tuesday night to 4:00 AM on Wednesday morning, and the locations are the high school Gilcrest Road near, uh, Route 102 in Home Depot. So, if you're in that area, you may, and if you're up between 10 and 4, um, you may notice, uh, some issues with your water pressure. Don't be alarmed, they're just doing some water testing.
And that if you are on town water.
If you're getting Penachuk.
If you're getting Penachuk.
So, go to sleep at 10. Don't get up before 4:00. Does the Budget Committee want to join us up front? No? It's up to you guys. You don't have to if you don't want to. Okay. Want to make the offer. All right, uh, Budget Workshop, um, what do you want to start with?
Well, you all have an updated, uh, budget summary form. Um, not much has changed on this since the last one, except we have added in, uh, placeholders there for, uh, the CBAs, um, at the end there. Um, I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll have, uh, agreements, tentative agreements with them by the time we have to set the warrant. Uh, there's also been an update to, um, warrant article 17 with the paving. Yanosh, uh, has a, a true estimate now. Uh, note the word estimate for $265,000 on that. Um, other than that, there haven't been, uh, any other changes. Justin, am I missing anything on that?
Nope, you're not.
Nope, you're not.
So I just have an, I just have a, I'm hoping, I'm getting to the point that I'm finding it a little bit ridiculous that we have 27 articles again. You know, I mean, there's got to be a better way to do this. I mean, we're sending people into the, into the voters' box with 27 different things that they've got to look at. I mean, and you can explain it to me nine ways to Sunday, that this is what the law says, and this is how we have to do it. But I need something, you know, a little bit more simple to send, to give to the voters, one, on the day they vote. So, and two is, if we can't do that, we need to start explaining this a lot earlier, and explaining to them why they have to spend 15 minutes in there looking at this.
Josh, a question. Is there any reason why we have five articles for a special meeting on cost items?
Well, oh, go ahead, Justin.
That is for each one of the union agreements. If that gets voted down, if the union agreement gets voted down, the special meeting allows us to continue conversations with the union.
There's, there's no way to legally combine those into one?
I'm not sure, but if that gets voted down, then all five, we're not able to continue conversations with at once.
So have a conversation with the town attorney and DRA, and whoever else you need to have a conversation with, to find out if we can, you know, have one overall article that says, if any of the five get denied, we can call a special meeting. All right, we've got to start thinking outside the box. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not blaming you. I mean, I understand your explanation.
If that, if that gets voted down, then all five are off the table at that point.
Well, I think what, what the chairman's suggesting, though, is let's see if we can find a legal way that meets muster with DRA and, and, you know, the, the town attorney to see if there's a way to word it that that won't be the case, just so we don't have to put five additional warrant articles on here if, if something gets voted down.
Yeah, what I've never understood is why we can't include it in the same, inside the language of the, of the contract that we're asking them to vote on. I just have never been able to understand that. I'm just, I mean, I'm listening to what the residents are saying, they're saying, you know, saying, come on, help us out here.
I got it, and when I put it together and noticed that there's an additional 10 this year because of the union contracts, I knew that...
And I understand that.
I wouldn't be welcome with a warm regard.
And I don't have an issue with it, but, you know, but there should be five, not 10. You know, there's five unions, right?
Yep.
I would say the most we could get it down to is six. You can't, I don't think you can put it in the same one as a union, because then you're essentially not giving the voters an opportunity to vote on it.
I don't know, but if we could please look at it and see if there's a way that we can lend some simplicity to it, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And Items 4, 5, and 6, the way it's, it's on here, this hopefully, if this passes, much like the sewer account, this will be the last time the police detail revolving fund will be on the ballot. So if everything gets approved the way it's worded, we won't have to put this on the ballot going further either. Again, that's all supported by user fees.
And, and that's one there that I am actually working, waiting on a response from DRA to see if we're able to combine two of those. The dissolving and establishing, there may be a way to combine those into one warrant article.
And now, is Number 7, the legislature and the governor sending money back to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
We actually need to vote on that?
So they created one for us.
That was DRA?
We have to vote on it so we can accept the funds.
Yeah.
Oh, where in the past we were able to just accept it on the town council.
Right, now we have to have the voters accept it.
The only way to include it outside of a separate warrant article would be to add it to the proposed budget, which would put the proposed budget over the default budget.
Well, that's annoying.
I think SB 2 needs to be fixed.
Well, so can I mention that, on that issue, Mr. Chairman? We can fix it ourselves. It would require...
You're going to tell me you're going to put another warrant article on?
I was going to say, it's going to requ, it's going to require another warrant article.
Why can't the legislature just do its job?
I would love for that to happen, but we can put on a warrant article that would allow the town to define the default budget going forward, so that we wouldn't be at the mercy of the, whatever the legislative rules are at the time.
It's because if we're a charter community, we can put it in our charter. I think we have to do a charter amendment, don't we?
And that's what the warrant article would be, yep.
Let's look at some language, see what it says. I just love how we keep adding stuff to it.
Well, and so while we're on that note, two petition warrant articles. If anyone is thinking of a petition warrant article, the last day to submit those to the town is Tuesday, January 7th. So I would encourage anyone who's going to submit a petition warrant article to get it to myself first, to be the wording, to go to the town attorney to make sure it's correct, and then you have to have it into the town clerk by Tuesday, January 7th, with the required number of signatures.
So if we change the charter, how many of these articles can we eliminate? I mean, we can eliminate DPW leases.
Yep, you could eliminate the accepting of state revenue, the supplemental budget. So there's at least three of them.
All right, let's see some language. We've got to figure out how to get this thing shorter.
Councilor Dolan, you had asked a question during the last meeting on looking at how many other towns currently pay for the trash and recycling pickup for the school districts. I did reach out to my counterparts on that, I didn't receive a lot of responses back. I can tell you that most of the responses I received, they're done separately, so the school budget, the trash and recycling's in the school budget, and the town, it's not in the town budget. The largest ones I received there were from, I believe, Hudson and Atkinson. Again, I maybe got a sampling size of six or seven on it. So I can certainly reach out to the surrounding communities here, since they're right next to us, just to see what they're doing.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Chairman, my, my thought on that was, was it's not going to change the, the homeowners or the business owners' tax, ultimate taxes are going to pay, but it would help, I believe, to do the apples-to-apples comparison as people are deciding how they're going to vote on the various budgets, or what's going to be included in the various budgets. The way we're doing it now somewhat masks the, the unit cost per government, and it would make more sense, especially if we're going to continue to compare ourselves to other local communities, that, that the comparison is equivalent. So I would suggest that we separate that out.
So you gentlemen were copying an email that I sent to the school board, informing them that this came up. I told them there had been no decision on what we would do. I also had expressed to them in that email that we may ask to recover funds from this current financial year. We have not discussed that, but I didn't want to blindside them and let them know that that may or may, may get discussed. So do you, do you want to recover what we had within this year, or just let it go? I don't have a point of view. It was represented to them that we would discuss it.
It's my thought that we do it going forward. I'm not, you know, to try to recover a cost, again, it, it just takes money from one government into another and...
Just asking.
Yeah, I, no, it's a good, it's a good ask. I'm just thinking that it's, it's for an apples-to-apples comparison, it's not a tax rate cut, but it, it just helps everyone understand what the various governments are spending money on going forward.
So what I'm, what I'm understanding is, is that the consensus of the council to direct the town manager to, let the superintendent know that going forward into the budget they'll be presenting on December 3rd, I think they're presenting their budget, that they need to include $124,000 for waste management going forward.
Correct.
And that we will not ask to recover money from the past.
Right.
So we've probably been paying this bill for 10, 20 years?
Or more.
Or more? So that's what you guys want to do?
Yes.
All right, well, you have your direction, Kevin.
No, the other thing too with that, John, is are we billing them for the gasoline?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So what changed in the last couple of years is there were multiple services that the town was providing to the school that had been a legacy thing for many years. Among them were gasoline, electricity, landscaping, snow removal, and there were probably some I've missed.
It's a good start.
So that what we've done over the last few years is, is we've separated those out. Are we aware of anything else? Because I, I don't want to surprise them with anything.
Not from my standpoint, no. We've cleaned that all up.
Okay.
Perhaps, maybe we can approach it to them that we're looking into also this power supply and coming to potentially lower electricity rates that could help them on another side. Now, we're looking into it.
You're absolutely right, Ted. That's why we, I think, was, you know, have them bring their most aggressive plan, so that we can figure out if, you know, if, if the school government wants to work with the community, to put solar panels on all the buildings, and there's a way we can figure out how to do that, and everybody saves money, it's a great idea. So I, but I don't know the answer to any of that, and I don't know whether they would participate or not. We would have, let's see, see the presentation first.
Of course.
Okay. Anything else on the budget? Budget Committee, anything from you guys?
So, Mr. Chairman, one of the items that you had raised during the budget presentation in November was looking at a potential schedule of using fund balance going forward to help offset the tax rate and bring tax relief to the, to the residents and town. What I wanted to present you with tonight is a draft of a potential resolution that the council could adopt at a later meeting, titled the Taxpayer Relief Act of 2020. And there's basically three components to this plan. The first one would be to apply a million dollars against the tax rate over five years, beginning in calendar year 2020, using undesignated fund balance. And so it would appropriate $200,000 per year, beginning in calendar year 2020 through calendar year 2024. The caveat to that, to that would be that the fund balance does not fall below the recommended levels during that time. And so essentially, the first $200,000 of fund balance usage at the beginning of a fiscal year would be applied to the tax rate. The second component of it is that there will be no townside CIP requests until at least fiscal year 2024. The CIP requests are often large-ticketed items that are put on that plan, and so, given that fact, it would be our commitment to not have anything on the CIP until fiscal year 2024, if, if necessary. And then the third...
You don't really foresee anything for the next seven to 10 years, right?
I am not, no.
Okay.
And then the third component of that would be no new full-time personnel requests until fiscal year 2023, unless they are 50, at least 50% grant or other outside revenue funded in year one. And that would exclude retirements, indoor department reorganizations. Again, as personnel costs are really our most costly item in the budget, representing over 90% of the budget, it would, looking at that, it would tell us, obviously, there's no full-time requests in the next budget fiscal year 21, and we would also be looking at no new requests in fiscal year 22, again, unless they were at least 50% funded outside of taxpayer support.
Any questions?
This sounds like a great plan, so far.
Any questions?
I think we'd be, there's a rough quote of potentially 4.34 cents on it per thousand, is that correct?
Currently, right now, yeah, about $200,000 represents about that, Ted, because our valuation is at 4.6 billion now. And so, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't sound a lot like a lot, like you were saying before when we were talking about the electric rates, but that's per thousand, and with valuations haven't gone up the way they did, that certainly adds up. And so, again, that would be over the, over five years...
Right.
Would be 200,000 going in each fiscal year.
So on a house that's about 350,000, that would be $15.19 on the whole year. So it adds up, something.
Well, it's going in the right direction. Budget Committee, any questions?
What is the fund balance now? What would that do to the fund balance? UFB on a year basis?
Yeah, so we have approximately $1.2 million of fund balance usage currently, and by the proposed budget that we have before us, the only use of the fund balance right now would be for the driveway paving, 265,000. If we then applied an additional 200,000 this year, that keeps us with, you know, above the, the floor of about 800,000. I anticipate that would grow in subsequent years. So I think saying that we can commit $200,000 going forward per year for the next five years is, I think that's doable.
We can always reverse a resolution, too. The sitting council can withdraw it.
You also have another 35,000 for two capital reserve fundings.
Thank you, Justin, yep.
Yes, Tim.
My concern was, which I've never really got an answer on, we, we had like 4 million, and we were covering the schools. We decided we were not going to cover the schools, but they're only sitting with 800,000 in roughly UFB. If a catastrophe happened with the schools and such a thing, it's, they're not even close to being able to cover some of the things that could go wrong with what they would have to do, and they have no way to make money, other than coming under their budget and save it for the next year or stuff like that. So the question becomes, if a catastrophe happened on the school level, and the town has to help cover that, or some whatever happened comes up and stuff, do we have enough? Because we were covering the town and the school with that, but then when we stopped covering the school, we used it for non-school stuff. It's not like we gave that to the school and said, here's your balance for your UFB that was set aside to cover you, you know? So, you know, if you, if you run into a problem, that's your problem with that, 2 million dollars or whatever. So the question becomes, how is the town, if there's a major catastrophe on the school side, going to help cover the school? Because it is realistically one pair of pants, so...
So the...
I'm just worried that if it gets that low...
So the, the quick answer to that is, is that even though we changed the policy, and whereby we're not including the school's appropriation in our formula anymore, we have maintained a balance that is at the levels of the old policy, if you will. So the number of 1.2 million is actually at the old policy amount. Now, according to our new policy, could we spend more than that? The answer is yes. But these are, using that number, it's a very conservative number, and that's why I feel that we could apply those amounts over the next five years and still keep enough in there. Justin, I believe the total fund balance level is, is it just over $6 million right now? I don't have the number in front of me.
Believe so.
Yeah. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty healthy fund balance amount. Don't confuse what's available to use versus what the actual total is.
I keep getting 4.2 in my head instead of like up to 6, so I'm trying to figure out where I'm getting that difference from.
It may be, that may be the difference between what is, what can be used versus what the total amount is in the fund balance, and, and what we're actually keeping in there.
Yeah, you just gave me a number of almost 2 million higher than what I was thinking. So, all right, don't mind.
Go ahead, Tom.
Also, for the Budget Committee, there, not only do we have a formula issue that Kevin just kind of went through, but we have a recent behavior history that, let's not forget, that when we had a, a calculation problem with the, with the tax dollars, the town covered the school shortages by several hundred thousand dollars. And also, it, this, it wasn't an emergency that you were talking about, but with the potential of a, of a, a new school district building, that they had a problem because of the quality of the air and so forth, and the, and the condition of their old space, the town offered to use the, our fund balance to help build a new school district facility... the town offered to use the, our fund balance to help build a new school district facility that's right now being leased instead. But that, that was, again, that's a behavior the Town Council exhibited in order to help the school district. So I think that not only is our policy flexible, but I think our recent behavior has been such that we've been willing to reach out to help the school board on a number of occasions. So I think that, I don't see that changing.
I never, it wasn't that I didn't think it would, the town wouldn't help. I was just wondering, will we have the money to help? So in addition to that, what, what can happen is, is that, you know, like, like the town, the school carries insurance, too. And, you know, so one, their insurance company would kick in. Two, and in discussions with the town attorney over the years, is, is we would move to Superior Court, we would ask for an action to go to the ballot. And we would go to the ballot in an emergency to the voters and say, we need to raise X number of dollars for this reason immediately. And that would be the, the legal way of going about doing it. And we would have to go to, and we'd have to send a separate tax bill then, in, in the event of a catastrophe. Now, that would have to be pretty monumental. So.
And Tim, Justin did just confirm that it is 6.2 million.
So, okay. What else have I got for, all right, so one, are we in agreement that this resolution's a good idea?
Yeah, I would say that we should ask the town manager to bring us a, a written formal resolution that we could consider.
Absolutely. Questions on the, on the, on the possible resolution from the Budget Committee? All set? Okay, so just to review, return a million dollars over a five-year period, while we're saying no, no capital improvement requests for the next five years, although we don't see anything for the next seven to 10 years, and freeze on personnel excluding retirements and reorganizations departments. We all in agreement?
Yes.
Agreed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else on the budget?
So, I guess one other item that I'll bring up during the budget discussion, though it was a later item in the agenda, is on our current, what we currently allow for our elderly exemptions. There was a, an email that we all received recently from a resident in town whose father is an elderly gentleman who receives both the, an elderly exemption as well as a veteran's tax credit. Because of the valuations having increased, but the exemptions having stayed static, it amounted to a significant increase in the amount of taxes that this elderly person is now paying. And that was the case with probably a dozen and a half of our elderly residents in town who are current, currently receiving the exemption. So what I've given you tonight is what our current limits are if you're seeking an elderly exemption. I've also provided you with a spreadsheet that lists not only our exemptions we offer, but all of the surrounding communities and what their levels are at. And I guess the question is, is we haven't touched the elderly exemption limit since 2007. Is this something we want to explore doing? If so, how, how much do you want the increase to be in those limits? And sir, I invite up Rick Brado, our town assessor, as well to speak to this issue, if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think that it's time that we looked at making these adjustments. We have such a large number of seniors in our community, I think that they're, they are keenly focused on this. We do quite well with our elderly exemptions, but I think we could do better. As I look at the, the amounts around the state, I certainly don't want to be the highest in the state, but I think if we're maybe in the 90th percentile, and if we picked the same numbers, for example, that Manchester currently uses, that would put us close to that level. If we look around at the surrounding, rather, the other communities in the state, it's only five or six that would offer greater exemptions than that level. And so I would, I would suggest we look at Manchester as an example to, to make an adjustment and an update to our elderly exemptions. And maybe we could ask Rick to help us understand the impact of that, if we were to go in that direction.
That was probably a 10 to 12% increase.
So, Rick, let me ask you a question. On average, how much do the valuations go up in town, residential?
20%, 19.6.
So the first thing I would ask him for is, is take it up 19.6 and let's see what it looks like and see what that means. And at least, let's, let's start there.
It's kind of, I, I kind of agreed with Tom with Manchester's.
Well, that's, that's nice that you agree. I appreciate that. That's, that's really nice. And I very much appreciate that. So, take it up 19.6%. Let's look at it and compare the two numbers and maybe we land in the middle or, or whatever the case may be. But, but at least we know, I'm trying to apply, this is going to sound crazy, some sort of science to it that we actually can like, you know, that we can actually speak to. So your valuation went up 19.6% on average in town, we only go up 10%. And if we can justify that, that's great. But at least we've had the discussion based on what we actually did, since we haven't changed it since 2007.
Mm-hmm.
I, I at least want to have that active of a discussion, yes.
Mr. Chair, just made a question for Kevin and for Rick. Do you guys know when the other surrounding towns in the areas have updated their numbers?
I don't know when they updated them. Usually it's, unfortunately, around the revaluation times because that's when you're going to get the most-
Noise about it.
Exactly.
And we probably don't want to be like Wyndham where-
Wyndham is, is extremely high.
Off the charts.
At 500,000 is-
For 80-plus.
Basically, they exempt your full taxes once, once you're 80 and qualify.
Yeah, I'm, so you see where I'm going with this? Let's, if we can get a number that's, and maybe, maybe we land at 10, maybe we land at 19.6, maybe we land at 13. I, I don't know.
I mean, Manchester and Nashville are about the highest ones. And that's why I looked, like Tom did, at Manchester's because it was just lower than Nashville's. But maybe, you're right, we'll end up somewhere in between.
I just want to be able to, after taking so many phone calls, I, I want to have some sort of detail behind explaining it, if that makes sense.
I took a lot of phone calls, too, and-
Well, I, I think, I think the-
I was just going to ask for the spreadsheet and email, that's all.
I think the, the thought is that we are looking to provide more relief. It's just a matter of how much at this point.
Right.
Well, I'll, I'll get that to Kevin and we can-
Maybe if you two can also do an analysis upon how it would affect the overall tax rate as well.
Well, I'll, I'll give you the number, how much more dollars it's going to cost the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Each individual.
We need to be able to explain that as well.
Right.
Okay.
I can do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, and I also got that letter underwater today, too.
Well, we'll find out what all that means, mail it in tomorrow.
We'll have it.
So, I needed a witness so I could sign it, you know? It's Home Alone. I could have brought it with me this afternoon, but I didn't think about it.
Don't you know the clerk?
She wasn't home.
Can bring it into Town Hall.
I, I was busy this afternoon. Anything else on budgets? All right, round the horn. Anything? Steve?
Nothing.
Colleen? Rick? Chief Number One? Fire Chief? Public Works? Budget Committee?
One question. Are you going to pay the school to use the gymnasium for elections? Are they going to start renting their buildings out to the town?
You want to know what? They can have that fight with the Secretary of State.
I'm just curious. I just, because we talk about separating, I can just see it coming, you know?
Well, you know what?
I just forgot to ask.
If that, if that's where we're going to go, last time I checked, every one of us is a taxpayer here in this town and pays for that gymnasium.
Yeah, with 70-some percent of your taxes.
And I think, and I, and I think they, and I think they hold their elections there, too. And in all seriousness, the Secretary of State would rules on those kind of things.
I'm just curious because I'm trying to avoid any type of, of fight between the town and the school because we need to kind of get them back to working together again. So, just curious.
That would be, that would be tremendous. There, there are multiple emails, even ones that have been sent in the last month requesting the, the chairperson of the, of the school to meet with the chairperson and another member of the council and another member of the school. We've asked for joint meetings again, they've all been requested in writing, and we hear nothing. We're trying.
I'll just ask them.
I appreciate it. If that's, you know, if, I, it would be a sad day if that's the path they take. Anybody else?
I'll work with DRA to see what we can do about the authorization for special cost items.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate it. Is that it on budget?
It's up.
Thank you.
So, the first public hearing is Monday, December 9th. You heard it here first.
Actually, it was in the newspaper last Thursday.
Oh.
Legally, I have to say that.
Mr. Chairman, take a motion on business.
All budget documents or a good amount of the budget documents are available on our website underneath the Finance Department page.
I've been sitting here this entire time for this portable structure thing. I understand that.
They understand that?
You don't, you don't want to take comments until you get a public hearing.
I will, I will take the motion, but I want to, I think we should explain to them what we're doing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on a new business that, for ordinance 2019, '07, and '08, and resolution 2019, '09, and '10, that this is a first reading and that we waive the first reading and schedule public hearings for these four items at the next available council meeting, where you could take public comment.
All those in favor, hold the vote. Hi, gentlemen, how are you? So you guys are here for ordinance 2019-07, right?
The Public Source?
Yes.
That's the one.
So, let me explain to you what's happening here. What's happening is, is that we do a, we're going to, we do a first reading of the ordinance. Sort of nothing happens tonight, other than we read it. Then we have, then we have a public hearing in the future, in which we'll entertain comments from the public and everything. So what's going to happen real quickly here is I have a motion and a second, we're going to vote, and then that item will be over and we're going to move on. So, you took the time to sit here? I don't normally, we don't normally do this. Is there anything you want to add in tonight? Or do you want to, or can you wait for the public hearing?
I think we can wait for the public hearing. My only question is, I submitted a proposal to the, to the council and to the town manager. I don't, did we, did that stuff? Did you folks receive that? Was sent out on the 11th? 11th? No, I sent from my, my system. Directly to the-
To me on the 11th?
November 11th.
I'll have to, I'll have to go back and look. I'm not, I'm not certain if that proposal got to me or not.
So I'm sorry, I don't know what it, I don't know what it is. Let me, I'm going to look at my email, see if I got anything.
Was it just sent to me?
No, I sent a copy to you and a copy to the council.
Mr. Chairman, just, if I may, just mention part of the history of our, of our government. We do multiple readings of things like this, and it's really an arcane practice that's in state law. And it really dates back to the days when most of our citizens couldn't read. So the local governments would do multiple readings of, of acts or ordinance changes, things like that, because the residents needed it read to them, since they couldn't read themselves. So it dates back several hundred years in our history of, of how we exercise local government. So what we've kind of come to, we comply with state law, we do have a first reading. We usually waive that first reading because we assume that our residents can read at this point, and they can read it for themselves if they're that interested. But then we have the most important part, which is a, a second reading slash public hearing, where we invite all residents to come and speak on the issue at that point in time, after, after they've gone through a first and now a second reading. So that's, so just so you're not confused as to why we do this and with, some people think they're getting yanked around because I just came here for a meeting and now there's another meeting a couple of weeks later or a week later, and, and that's the reason. It's a, it's an arcane element of our state law.
I did know the public hearing was on the 9th, but I just, I have to.
Right.
All right, so, so Mark, I have the email, I did read it. And now, and now I remember reading it.
Excellent.
I understand what you're saying. Basically what he's, basically what he's saying is, is that the planning board moved forward with one piece, he feels that there's pieces that should be considered in the final ordinance, has made some, has attached some documents with some suggestions. What I would say is, is that now that the, we're going to take a vote on what's presented to us in the reading, the council can make changes, you know, without going back to the planning board, or we can send it back to the planning board. Why don't we send this on to the, the town attorney? Let's look at this and have a conversation with the, with planning and with the planning board and, and try to understand what the, what the gaps may or may not be-
Right.
Prior to the 9th.
Yeah. And Mark, I, I do have it, too, and I'm, I apologize for not recalling it, but I can send it along to the attorney and have them look at it.
Mr. Chairman, also, if we come on the 9th with a, a public hearing and a second reading, and we still have issues and questions, we can always schedule a third reading and an additional public hearing if, if we can't resolve them at that point.
So, it's probably a good thing you were here tonight. All right, so, all right, we need to take those actions. All right, I'll, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. This is your, your, your notice for first reading and public hearing for December 9th. These will be posted with the next agenda. Thank you. I think the only other item we have left on the agenda tonight is community, communication options.
We have an order, Order 29.
Oh, I have a maintenance order. You couldn't take care of that one, too, with that motion?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, Steve, you've been sitting here all this time. How much more of our money are you spending?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's in reference to Order Number 2019-26. Today, we're looking, tonight, we're looking at replacing the 15-year-old ice machine at the North Fire Station that is beyond repair. I just want to make sure it's clear that even though it's located at the fire station, this is a ice machine that's used for police department, highway, town functions, town hall, supported functions such as old home day.
Senior center.
Senior center, that kind of stuff. So just because it's located at the fire station, it's not purely a fire station ice machine.
So we don't have any ice machines anyplace else?
No.
We don't have a backup to our backup?
We do not have a backup to that.
Too soon.
Oh, that, that. Anyways, moving, moving right, moving right along. Also, also in addition, the machine up there currently right now is a 525-pound ice machine. We do not need a 525-pound ice machine. So we've backed it down 200 pounds, which, so this is for 330-pound ice machine.
Oh, that's great.
How much would a 525 actually cost if we did want to go that route?
Probably double this.
Okay, good to know.
Okay.
So, tonight, I'm looking for $3,475 to support the replacement of the existing beyond-repair ice machine. Staff will assist me in installing the ice machine at the North Fire Station. So right now, what I'm looking for, for 2019-26, is approval for $3,475.
Mr. Chairman, motion to, to pass as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, community communication options. So it's become, it's come to my attention that there is multiple ways that the community has been communicated with over the years. The school department sends emails, we use seven or eight different mechanisms to communicate. I was asked recently by a school board member, you know, could we send emails through the town? There is something on the website where you can sign up and you can be, become part of whatever announcement you want to become via your email. of whatever announcement you want to become via your email. What I also suggested to the, to the, the school board member was, is that the school department's been collecting emails, going back probably to 2005, if not earlier, and just because they graduated, doesn't mean the emails aren't any good anymore. So that perhaps there was a way that we could all work together to, see, Tim, work together, so that we could possibly be able to vet all these emails, find out what works, what doesn't work, and try to work together to come up with a way to communicate with the community, whether that be, you know, via Twitter, whether it be via email, whether it be all of the things we use today. But between the two governments, we need to come up with a way so that we can have an understanding of how we're all sending out messages, so that, you know, if the school department is sending something out, and it needs to go to everybody in the town, then we can get it to everybody in the town. And we need to figure out a way to collectively work together to make that happen. I don't have a solution or an answer tonight, but I'm asking us to take it as an action item on our side, to work with our IT department, to work with their IT department, and whomever else is necessary to make that happen. Ideas?
I'd take it a mailing would be too expensive to do this.
Yes.
I don't have a solution for you right now, but I've got another problem I'd like you to add to that one.
Before we add more comments?
Yes.
Right now, the problem we're having is, we've got all the charity organizations with the documents and everything, but there's no place for me to put them up on the network for the rest of the members, budget committee members, to look at them if they want to review anything. We've got email, but other than sending an attachment out with one for every email, there's not like a Dropbox place with, for the town, for us to put those files up there for all the budget committee members to see. Now, you've got to remember, we're working remotely, so if we were at the building here, it would be on a network and a shared folder, that's fine, but for like boards, like maybe planning board or budget committee or something, if we have documents that we want to share, and say, hey, guys, go up to here, and you can look at this document, we don't have that. So I can put it up on a Dropbox-type thing, but what happens if somebody comes up and says, I want to see all the emails and communications that the budget committee was looking at? That's on like, one of our private Dropbox's that we're trying to share those documents with, so nobody else would necessarily see those and stuff, but it's also something where we don't want to be able to leave notes, we just want to be able to put the file up there, like whether it's read-only format or whatever, so that way we're not communicating, you know, out of a public meeting in that, you know, but we do need to be able to put the documents up so we can see them.
I got just the person to take care of that for you. There's this liaison to the budget committee, I think it's the finance director.
I thought it was Tom.
No, but a staff liaison.
For staff.
So perhaps, perhaps he does something like that already in his department, maybe. And maybe there's a way we could figure something out?
Or something to work out with IT.
So, my first thought is, as these social service agencies are doing a great service to us, why don't we put it on the budget committee website for everyone to see what their money is going towards?
Yeah, that's fine, because I've got every, I've got all of them, but I'm just trying to figure out where to put them for everybody.
Yep, and then at the website, you'd be able to see, everyone would be able to see it there, and we could update it on a yearly basis when we get the new ones and remove the old.
I'll send you all the PDFs.
Perfect.
Does that work?
That works.
Got a communications answer?
Yeah, it works perfect. That solves my problem, you erase it.
Yeah, you're going to solve mine?
I think, actually...
I'm trying to pick the easiest thing possible to collaborate about.
She can like mind meld or something, I don't know.
John, I think a probably good way to help start collecting potential emails and contact information would be if people would be willing to voluntarily give it at voting, for, we have the big primary coming up, people are able to fill it out and drop it in a box, and we put it into our data system for communication. That would be certainly a lot cheaper than a mailing to request, you know, contact info.
So what I'm trying to think my way through is, is can we, could we just get all the, we just get the school to send an email to every email in their database, see which ones are dead, and then capture the other ones, because they, you know, within their database, and that's a place to start. And, and taking off on your idea, there's a link on the website for whatever you're interested in the town to put in your email, and then you would be notified and everything, and we capture that email. Can we, can we just hand out the link at elections?
We could hand out the link, but actually having someone fill it out would actually get them to do it. If you hand them something and they go home, it's going to be tossed out.
But then I've got to get somebody to do something, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I know.
You know, I mean, yes.
The school has a new communications committee charge, they meet once a month, and maybe could be reached out to to see what they're discussing for getting information out to the community, and maybe we could team up with them and see what they're doing to send some information between each other.
Yeah, I mean, a few of the meetings I've attended for the schools and everything, they, they approached me and asked me, I said, you know what, this is, this is a perfect win-win, where we can pick something easy and all work together.
So another thought, just throwing it out there, is with our motor vehicle registrations, dog registrations, we put a little thing on the bottom urging people to go there. I feel as though the school can do something similar, and we just, we create one database of those that are willing, rather than pulling from the past to see what's still out there.
That's fine, too.
Yeah. Maybe when people register their cars, we also collect their email.
Well, I know we're doing that somewhat, but I feel as though we should probably get permission from them to...
Right.
Send them out other things other than their motor vehicle registration.
Right.
And when you get that automated system down at the drop-off center, that's got to be in place, that, you know, we've put it on somebody's thing.
I'm meeting with them tomorrow, actually.
Perhaps they can, we can get, capture an email right there.
Yeah.
So for those of you who don't know, what we're doing is, is that, you know, some of us went to Laffa one day and saw them at the concession stand with their, with their iPad and, and their, their Square, and swiping debit cards and credit cards, and we're still collecting checks down at the dump, and what we're saying is, with the drop-off center, whatever it is that we call it, so we've been looking at for the last few months, is there a way that we can have that work down there, so that, you know, there's a menu, you put whatever it is, swipe your card, you drop your stuff off, there's no more checks. For people who don't have checks, they've had, been going to the Irving to get money orders, and kind of trying to make that a little bit more, you know, streamlined down there.
So I've looked at Square, but at the NHMA conference, I ran into one that focuses on governmental entities, whether it's the jails or something like that, so I'm meeting with them tomorrow to discuss what the possibilities would be.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Just remember, there's spam laws, you've got to watch with emails, you can't just use emails for anything, you definitely want to look with spam laws.
There's probably some sort of disclosure we have to put on them and everything, you're absolutely right. So, but if we can start looking at that, or as I was discussing it with Lisa, is, is maybe that's the short-term fix, maybe the long-term fix is something else? Because when we were talking about it, Lisa said, well, you know, I mean, a lot of those emails, I get so many of them, I just delete them. So is there a way that we can actually, you know, push information out, so that, you know, I mean, you know, sometimes, like, I was just in Florida, and like, you know, it's crazy, but two or three times down there I got Amber Alerts. You know, so, I mean, is there, is there a way to push something out to the community based on what we're all carrying around? I don't know the answer, but I do know that we need to, you know, work together as a community to figure it out.
Yeah, and certainly something that doesn't pop up as an advertisement, or a, what's the other word, where Indeed would pop up, or LinkedIn, because people sometimes will just hit delete all, because they don't want to see their advertisements.
So if we can, as staff, if you can approach the school staff and the library staff, maybe they've got some ideas, too, and see if we can come up with a collective way to collaborate together to reach the community as a whole? As an example, we had this whole conversation about PFOAs this morning, we would be able to push all that out to people.
Or we could actually remind people that town elections are actually coming up, and please actually come out and vote.
Well, you know, there's probably laws around that, but we'll figure that part out. Let's figure out how to communicate with them.
Just a generic.
Good. What else? Liaison reports? Oh, I'm sorry, approval of minutes, November 7th. Can I have a motion to approve minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, thank you. Liaison reports? Anything new? All right, so I went up to the, the trailways ribbon cutting, it was nicely attended, the sponsors for the trailways, the people who actually, the companies that contributed money, the airport director that was there, I have to say it was extremely well-attended in the rain, and that was, that was a nice event. Town manager report?
I'm all set.
Oh, do you have something else on the fire department that you may want to talk about?
World Trade Center.
Oh, with the 9/11 ceremony?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was a, it was a very nice ceremony a couple of Fridays ago, through the help of former Lieutenant Michael Roberts and Glenn April with the police department, we were able to secure a piece of the World Trade Center building, and it was, they went and picked it up down in New York City, and had police escorts all the way from the city to the fire department with the state police of each state that they passed through, and it was just, it was a great, great ceremony for the fire department, for the police department, and it'll be something really nice for the community to have at the Memorial Garden.
Very nice. Only last thing I would have is, is that I did attend the Division One State Championship football game last night, and I saw some of you there, and it was quite cold and windy and rainy, and those, those people who were playing on the field, the players were cold and tired, and it was a very exciting game. There was, London Dairy was very fortunate that a team that plays to near perfection made a couple of mistakes in the second half, and they were able to, you know, complete their undefeated season. A special thank you to the fire department and the police department and the police escorts, you know, to take care of the children of this community and get everybody out there safe and get everybody home safe. Anything else? That, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, new business item number two, is the council going to take that up tonight?
Did we miss something?
It was under a first reading item.
Court amendments?
First reading.
I think that fell under Tom's overall arching first reading items.
Yeah, we did all those at the same time, we did the first readings and took a motion on moving to the December 9th all at once.
I just didn't hear that motion for that particular one, that's all.
For those first four.
Yeah, so we did all four at once. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
So I have a motion, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. We're adjourned, see you on December 9th. Thank you.